Should we get started?
Yeah.
We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And I'll start with, I guess calling the meeting tour, I've done that. If you want to start with, we're going to recognize one of our colleagues as this is her final meeting before she leaves the board after four years of service. So David, do you want to start?
Well, we just want to recognize your service. Be proud.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
You know Diane, it doesn't stop here, you know, for all of your good service. Of course, this isn't really a farewell. It's a farewell from the board, but we hope that you, and we know you will stay connected to us in the work that you do. But we have also a plaque that we hope maybe you'll hang somewhere to continue to remind us of you and you of us. Your faithful, willing service and positive approach to all challenges are greatly appreciated by your colleagues. Your commitment to the students and the community are admired by all. We thank you for your dedicated service to the student staff and the schools of the South Burlington School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay!
It's not over yet.
Anne, on behalf of the board, we know how well you do in these situations. I'll read my comments because I don't want to forget them. But it's my privilege to recognize and honor Diane Bubbe's service on the school board this evening. Diane has been an invaluable member of this team of engaged citizens in the mission of preparing students who tend to South Burlington Schools for their next steps. Diane, we chose to recognize your service with a symbol that we believe best commemorates your contributions over the past four years. That is a compass. You've provided us and the community with reliable guidance during your tenure. You've helped navigate through difficult times and reminded us in all our deliberations to remain oriented to our students' needs. Your voice on the board reflects the personal integrity you bring to your work and your relationships, and your own moral compass serves as a great example of true north to us all. There's much work ahead. Because of your efforts, we are going in the right direction. We know you will, as you always have, be involved with our district, our students, and our staff in some capacity. Your service on this board is greatly appreciated and you will be sorely missed.
Thank you.
Good job. Now can we just end the meeting?
No, we're going to make her work a little bit more. That's right. Are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move to any amendments, David?
No amendments.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number six, End Celebration and Announcements.
So I think it would be right and appropriate to move right into the end celebration. Again, the board, just to bring people back to what we were doing, and again, the board has very much desired to stay connected with the schools. As you know, we travel around, the board travels around and has meetings at the various schools, and we thought this was a nice opportunity for the board to stay connected with some of the things, the positive things that are going on around our work connected to our ends. So we're happy to be here at the middle school, although we're quite regularly here. But this is an opportunity for the middle school folks to provide us with some of the celebration of some of the work. So without further ado, I'd like to just let Mr. Slentner maybe say a few quick words and, yeah.
Sure. And I promise I won't talk very much because we have a lot of middle school guests here, but I just want to emphasize that, you know, this is a little bit of a dipstick of some of the amazing work we're doing here at the middle school. And I honestly say that hopefully you will see a little bit of that, but I want to extend my gratitude to all the work that you do and also let you know that anytime you're welcome to stop by, to come here, to see the amazing work, I'd be glad to keep you updated as to some of the things that are going on. We have project-based learning, we have culminating activities, those kind of things, you're always welcome to come. But without further ado, because you don't want to hear me talk, we do have Laurie Sennobar and Corolla Troital who have a few students here as well to basically present a project they've been working on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slentner. So, yes, I'm Corolla Troital. My role here is music teacher, a technology teacher, and integration. And I'm with my fine colleague Laurie Sennobar. We have had so much fun doing this integration unit. We've actually done a couple this year already. And I want to thank Kersten and Paul for the opportunity, really for the teachers to do more of this integration because it is so rich. It is so full of really fine, fine material for the students, for the teachers, and it really feels like we are so working together this year. It's amazing. So we wanted to share with you some of the projects that students have been working on that meet the ENDS policy. And as we know, the ENDS policy states that students successfully complete their education from South Burlington School District, ready for the next step. They will show cultural and academic competence appropriate to grade and developmental capacity, and all graduates will be prepared for college, career, or individually determined next steps. We know that. There are many, many lessons and activities happening in the classes here at Tuttle Middle School. We've asked the eighth graders Sean, Anne, and Kaylee to be here tonight to share and give a couple of examples of the integrated language arts, multimedia, and music projects that have been going on that they've done this year. This will reflect the disposition for lifelong learning, academic proficiency, personal development, and citizenship within the ENDS policy. So Sean, I'd actually like to introduce Laurie Sennobar first. I'm so sorry. I forgot a school board number. I apologize profusely.
No, it's okay.
Good evening. My name is Laurie Sennobar, and I teach seventh and eighth grade language arts here at Tuttle. And I'm really honored to be here with three of my eighth grade students as they share their work with you. To give a brief background on these two projects, they're part of a theme entitled "Tell Me a Story," and I've been teaching this theme for many years, although I've modified it over the years to include different writing strategies that I think or thought would challenge my student writers. And so in years past, the two different assignments, I saw the rap activity as more or less an engaging way to have students interact with the content, which was basically the short story elements in kind of a fun way. And kids are into raps, some aren't. So in years past, I just would give them maybe a block period or two, they'd get together with a group, they'd put their rap together, thinking of their rhythm or their rhyme, you know, keeping in mind what they had learned. And then by the end of the period, they would present or perform their rap. They had fun, they collaborated, and they even learned a little bit and all was right with the world. So the movie trailers, actually, the second project that you'll hear about tonight, were born after I had students actually create book jackets to go along with their narratives. And I looked at the book jackets as I saw them hanging in my room one year after the students had done them, and I thought it'd be a really neat idea to have them actually create movie trailers. This way, their story could be brought to life and actually entice an audience. And the audience for them were actually their peers. And so all of their stories are in the shared folder. At the end of this whole project, we watched all the movie trailers together, and students could access anybody's narrative and anybody's trailer again in case they had an interest in reading it. So it wasn't until this year that I actually solicited the help of Corolla. And I really feel like I needed my, and wanted my students to have a more rich and deeper, you know, more meaningful experience with these two projects because I really saw a lot of value in them. So in short, I found the integration to be really successful. The collaboration was natural and quite energizing. We had a lot of fun together, including performing our own rap because we made one to perform for the students as well. We won't show that. And the culminating projects, well, I'll let you be the judges of that. Sean Carlson. You can stand right there.
When a teacher gives you a project that isn't writing an essay, people get excited. That's exactly what this rap was, an exciting but difficult task to accomplish. I'd use every possible skill that I had with technology to make this rap the best it could possibly be, including skills I didn't even know that I had before. One non-technological skill that I learned I had was independence. Whilst doing this project, I started realizing that I was doing all of the work between my partner and I and decided to take action. I asked Miss Sennobar if I could split from my partner so I'd be able to become more successful in my work. I believe that this was also helpful for my partner. He was then able to show off his own individual skills without someone helping him every step of the way. I was very thankful in how supportive Miss Sennobar was with this move. I also started learning about the program called Mixcraft. Now, Mixcraft is a program on our school computers that lets us mix different musical tracks together to make a beat or tune. You can also place audio in it, which is how I made the rap. I started finding different ways to make my music go perfectly with my words. It took me lots of time to figure these things out, but after I found one thing, there was another tool around the corner that made my rap even better. It was a very satisfying process, I'll tell you that. One final skill that I acquired while doing this project was being able to solve problems like a pro. Going back to what I said before, I solved the problem of my partner and I by separating us both for the better. This gave me the confidence and self-respect in my work. Also, throughout the project, I had to find very specific things. For example, I had to find a certain beat that was exactly a certain amount of beats, and it needed to have the same tempo as the rest of the song and lyrics. This became a huge challenge for me. I would find a drum segment that I liked, but then I would listen to the rap again with a new drum segment, and it just wouldn't fit with the piece. I had to try and try again. This became an extremely long process, keeping in mind that there were over 2,000 different kinds of beats on Mixcraft. However, it all turned out very well in the end, and this whole long process taught me a lesson on not only how to use technology, but also how to stay persistent in my work while having a good time with it as well. I would have to say that this rap project was one of the most enjoyable projects that I've ever done throughout middle school. It taught me lessons and it gave me a chance to learn about something that was very important in class while still having fun with it. This whole thing has taught me one very important message: If you love what you do, you will succeed. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest.
We're going to take a listen to it. This is just an audio. And it's about six minutes long. We're only going to play a portion of it in light of the time. You can sway if you want to.
Good job.
Um, here to show you the short story elements. Starts with plot A and with point of view. Thinks stuck in the middle. Character's a number two. Setting at number four. And now it's up to you. Now it's time to talk about our first element. And that's plot A. That's on the spot. It has a big diagram with five little parts on it. Each of them explain the plot, but that's not all I got. The plot is how the author arranges all of the events to develop his ideas. And as the first element, the plot begins with the exposition, character's insane reveal. Then we got conflict where things get all messed up. Then we got climax where the story is most intense. We then got the following action where things had to get for sale. Then to finish top plot is the red solution with a half center and all, you gotta say "Dinu ma."
Hello, my name is Anne Wong, and I'm going to be talking about turning our writing piece and narration, a narrative into a movie trailer. So first, you're going to be able to see my movie trailer, and then I'll talk about it after.
Although the mountains may seem enormous and treacherous to most people, they were One second, that's all it takes. In one second, lightning strikes six times. In one second, two billion emails are sent. In one second, there are forty-seven thousand Google searches. For me, my life is prevalent matter around me. It would never be the same in just that one second.
So when Miss Sennobar first told us about writing a narrative and then turning into a trailer, I was a little hesitant at first because I never really was very strong in writing. I knew that I liked it, but I really knew that there was improvement. So I learned, throughout this process, I learned a lot of new techniques that I was able to add to my writing. And one of the main ones was description. In this, I learned that I was able to pack my writing to the brim with description, which was something new that I'd never really done before. And one of the techniques that Miss Sennobar actually told us about was first writing what you were just, writing your ideas down and then going back and adding description, which was something that really helped me with this. And then also, on the theme of description, I also learned a lot of new phrases and words to add to my writing besides just similes, but I also learned how to use metaphors and allusions and some, and those different forms of description, which was really new to me. And then also, by the end of this project, I noticed a huge improvement in my editing skills of my writing, which was something new. I usually have, like, everyone look over it, which I did, but I noticed that they didn't notice as many mistakes the first time because I was able to catch them, which was really satisfying to know that I was able, that I was actually improving, which was something that was really great. And also, the mini lessons that Miss Sennobar gave us really helped with that. As I started to write my trailer, I noticed that I was really using a lot of the short story elements that we learned while doing our raps into my trailer. And I looked at a lot of trailers before starting this process, just so that I might be able to know how they go. And I noticed that they really used the introduction, the rising action, and the climax of the story. So that's what I was really trying to focus on in my trailer too, to also leave the viewer wanting to watch the movie. And I really focused on the climax and making it really intense and having the viewer be like, oh my gosh, what's going to happen next? And then as I was making my trailer, I also, it was really a new experience being able to turn my writing into a trailer. I knew that I liked to make film before. We've done it in seventh, even sixth grade in the beginning of this year. But I was exciting, I was really excited to turn my own story into film, which was something that I'd never really done before. I've always been given a prompt, which was, it was really valuable experience. And I, also along the way, I had a lot of fun because I do enjoy skiing. And so as I was writing my story and doing my, making my trailer, I was having a lot of fun thinking of all the skiing things, and that was really, it wasn't just another project, it was, it was really exciting for me. And I also noticed that I had a new connection with my story because I was able to turn nine pages of writing into a minute video, which was something that I'd never done before. And I thought that that overall was a really great experience. And then as I was making my trailer, not only was the footage I learned was important, but also the music. And actually, Miss Troital, she came into our class and she gave us a few mini lessons. And one of them was she gave us, we watched a two-minute clip of a video with different types of music, and it really opened my eyes to how important music was to set the mood of my story. And so as I was writing, as I was making my trailer, I really noticed that I would, that my words, since I wasn't able to have a lot of written words, I really needed to make my music into words, which was something that I really had never even thought of before. And it was a really great experience to do that. And then also, the last thing that I added to my trailer was a narration, and Miss Sennobar actually gave us the opportunity to do that. And I really never thought of even adding one before that, but I thought that it really added a new, like, a personal touch and that you could really feel connected with the person in the video. And especially since this was a tragedy, you could feel like, I want to watch this so I know what's going to happen. So overall, this project has really provided me with a valuable learning experience that I would never have even thought of before, and it really taught me new skills and it really made me feel more confident with how I was writing and how I was creating film. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Eustace, and I, just like Anne, wrote a narrative and created it into a trailer. And so I think that Miss Sennobar emailed my story to you, so I assume you all read it. So now, Miss Troital will play my trailer. Hope you enjoy.
Good.
Yes. Hi. So, before I wrote this piece, I never considered myself a writer. I was never confident. I never liked any of the pieces I wrote. I always, I was always scared of criticism and, like, even satisfaction. Even when people talk about my piece today, I'm like, oh no, it's not very important. I don't like it. But I actually do like it. And so, um, so I was, yeah, I was just always really scared to share my writing, and I just, I never felt like criticism would be something I would accept. I always felt, oh, if I got criticism, I was not good enough and I needed to make it better. So, um, later, after I wrote the piece, I heard about this writing contest called the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And so I was like, why not? I mean, you have nothing to lose. So I decided to submit this, this piece, the same trailer piece that you watched, to the contest, and actually, it won a gold key, which is the highest honors you can get for a writing piece. And now it is entered into a national competition for the best in grade. So. Because of that, I felt like, oh wow, my writing's actually good. And my confidence really increased and felt like, ooh, if I can write something good like that, I can continue to improve and to create more works that I know I will like and so will other people. But originally, I thought, I wanted to submit an older piece that I'd written in, like, sixth grade, to the contest, but with, it just didn't shine like the top of the Chrysler Building. So, and even with hint hints and wink winks from Sennobar, I submitted this piece. And I realized I needed a title for it, and it couldn't be some lame title I'd just come up with on the fly. It needed to be good, like intriguing. And so, at the end of the story, the girl who, it's about the Boston Marathon bombings, and so this girl comes to a runner and picks up her bib and holds it above her head and walks across the line even in all the dust and chaos. And so, that bib was like a small flag, like they did, like they had in the Civil War when they, like, people held the flags and they walked straight into the enemy's lines. And so I was like, that's a great title, the small flag. It's intriguing, and it makes it sound very innocent, but that's why you have to read it, because you realize it's moving and powerful. And so I picked that as my title. With the writing and the trailer, I had to collab a lot with different people. Like, for the writing, I created most of the plot myself, but with some help from Sennobar, like, creating the ending where the girl came. And the title, she helped me along the way make it very good. And I also had to share it with my class, which some of them did not, some of them ran out of the room. It's not exactly one of those faint of heart stories, so, yeah. But also, I got a lot of stares and, wow, that's really good, like, kind of those reactions. And so, they didn't exactly help me, they just made, they just satisfied. So, um, I decided I needed to take this into my brain and to Sennobar's imagination and come up with details and details and details. And so for the trailer, you saw, that was me. That was, yeah, that was me doing all those exercises. And my sister filmed me while I was doing it, so I, she would just tell me to go into the street and do thirty burpees without getting, like, without a car coming. So, I was doing burpees and ladders and, like, shuttle runs and lots of running. But, yeah, and I also used iMovie, which is a, which is, it's a movie program. You can make trailers, movies, the whole shebang. So, um, it had a, it was not very difficult because it had a pre-made format where you put videos in different spots. So I just followed that and filled it with video and text, and it was good. And so advocating for myself, I knew I had to get help with this. I couldn't do it by myself because it wouldn't be as good as it now, good as it is now, without anyone else hearing it. So, I mean, that's really hard for me because I don't take criticism well. I'm a perfectionist and an introvert, so those kind of don't really help me. But after, like, get, putting myself out there and letting people hear it and give them their opinions on it, it really helped me, like, become adaptable and, like, oh, this is really nice, I can totally use that, thank you. Like, I could, I could use that to help it make it even better, which is great. And now, after winning the contest, I feel like, I feel more confident and, like, resilient. So if something isn't going well or it's not, like, sounding perfect, I know I can get through it and make it sound amazing somehow, someday, I can do that. And so, yeah, in the end of this project, I really learned that you just have to stick with it, and even, and even if you don't like where you're at, if you're in a, if you're in a really rough point, you just, you can keep going. And when you find that golden, golden, golden flower, golden bar, when you find that, that word or that sentence or even that, like, whole story that's just right, right on point, you know that without any, without having confidence, resilience, or even adaptability to listen to others, you will, you realize it's all worth it in the end. So, thank you.
All right, thanks to the three of you, to Laurie, Corolla. Hopefully, this gave you a little bit of an insight as to how valuable it is to integrate the arts, to integrate multimedia into subject areas. So things are no longer subject-specific, and we talk about, you know, the skills that the students will need to be college and career-ready. I think it speaks for itself, okay? Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you so much. On behalf of the board, I know we all spent time looking at your information that you sent ahead of time, which we very much appreciate it. And I have to say, this is such impressive work. You know, Sean, I relearned what, about story structure, and Anne, your, your whole story was really, really moving, the whole relationship side of it. And Kaylee, the title was really intriguing, your choices of words, and just what you said right now about asking for help, that really impacted me as well. I'm so impressed and, and thank you. I'm so impressed and, and thank you, uh, you know, Lori and, and Corolla for your assistance. It certainly shines through in these, in these three students.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to another exciting topic, Agenda Item 7. The, um, Ashley, do we have announcements first?
Yeah, I want to do a couple quicker.
Sorry, yep.
Um, so for the announcements, uh, there's a few. Uh, last week, South Washington High School DeCA students competed at the 2015 Vermont State Career Development Competition at Sheridan on Monday and Tuesday. Um, of the forty-four teams that competed, forty of them took first, second, and third place in their team or individual business competition event. And also five of them will be the Vermont State DeCA officers next year. And, uh, the results for that are attached to the announcement. Um, also, Channel 17, uh, the town meeting on TV airs, the South Washington School Budget Presentation on the following dates. And Vermont's 2014 Energy Star School, which is taking place on Friday, February 20th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at U-32 High School in Montpelier. Um, and 2015 VC, VS BIT Spring Conference taking place April 8th and 9th at the Stokes Lake Resort. Um, and a copy of the conference is played during the cast. If you're interested in either of those, please let Zelena know. Uh, also, for the student reports, uh, so exciting things at the high school. Is that, today we had late start, which was really nice. We have break next week. It's been a great, great week. Last, last week, um, the importance of being earnest was the winter theater show and it went really well. Um, it got a lot of support from the community, which was really nice. Uh, the boys state track team, uh, won first this Saturday and the girls' track team won third place. Um, there are a lot of senior games this week too. Uh, girls', uh, basketball yesterday won their game and the senior hockey game is tonight. And the states for dance team and cheerleading is at Virginia's this Saturday. Um, and also, which was really exciting, is this Monday, uh, there was a showing of Misrepresentation, which was a documentary of how women are portrayed in the media, um, that a lot of high school juniors and senior watched through their social studies classes. And that was just a really interesting experience to watch as a school.
Thank you. Great, thanks, Norale.
Just a, a couple other in there. Um, I did include, um, we did include 50th Celebration, taking off on the high school logo, but it's Chamberlain. And, um, on March 8th will be, um, the celebration. So, board members, if you're interested in attending that, there'll be just a, a few, uh, a little bit of time scheduled to, to do that celebration. So, a few people saying a few words. Um, again, all of our schools, except for the middle school. Middle school's forty-seven years old. Every, every other school is over fifty. Um, a couple of other quick things, um, and, um, we can cover this a little bit in, in our, in our work between the city and the school, but we also want to inform, um, the Chamberlain community about the, the airport activity around, um, around the school. The homes that have been taken over, over a period of time, there's going to begin to start to deconstruct those, those homes. And that will happen between April and September. So, more to follow on that, but I think it's important for people to, to know that that's going to start to happen, um, in the Chamberlain community. And we will actually have, uh, some representation at a lot of those meetings to ensure that safe travel and traffic and noise will be paid attention to. So, that's all we have for announcements.
Good. All right, we'll move on to, um, the retirement plan and investment status.
Thank you. I was at a presentation of business managers the other day, and Beth Pierce at length about, um, the retirement plans that the state has. And I found that we are one of three districts that have their own plan and, uh, one of really two that have any extensive plans. So we have quite a responsibility to support staff and, and that's the focus tonight. A couple of things are investments and what we're doing going forward as far as a committee. But I want to update you on a few things, um, that you may or may not know. Retirement income plan is a defined benefit plan that we talked about more than anything because that's where our investments are and there's a lot of people there, um, in that plan. But we also have a new defined contribution plan that happened, that started in September of 2013, which new employees go into that plan now. They don't go into the defined benefit plan anymore. So, um, and right now, there's about ten people and the total liability is like four, is $4,000. So it's, it's, I didn't do an extensive report on that part, but I wanted to let you know in the 16 budget, there's $4,000 set aside for that. And that'll grow over time. There's also a couple of things we may not mention all the time, but any, any employee, south, support staff employee, whether they were hired before September of 2013 or not, if they, if they contribute to a 403B plan, the district matches up to 2% of their salary. So, that's, that's available to all support staff. I would say that that's not widely used and, um, and it's more, as time goes on, it's, it's more and more used, but it's, it's, um, something that people don't always take advantage of.
Do you have, do, can you give us a rough estimate of like percentage of?
Uh, you know, I have the dollar in my mind that the district contributed, but I don't, yeah.
What's the dollar?
It's about $50,000. And then, the state of Vermont 457 Plan, the staff employees are allowed to contribute to that also, but there's no district liability there. So those are the four ways. Um, employees either are in the first or the second plan, but there's two other ways to save money as a, as a support staff employee of the district. Next, I'll go into the defined benefit membership. Uh, I think about this a lot because 350, 343 employees or former employees are covered by the program. You know, uh, the actuary report said lives, 343 lives. And, um, that's, that's, that's a responsibility we have. There are now eighty-eight retirees receiving pension checks. And the, the annual payroll at this point is $330,000. And that's an average annual payment of $3,756. So it's really important to the support staff who are getting this. It, um, in the scale of things, it's, it's a small pension. I mean, but it, it's really important to the people who get it. We have seventy-one people who've left the district, who've vested, they had five years of service, who sometime, whether they might be waiting till they're sixty-five or whatever to receive the payments. And now we have a hundred and four, 184 employees who could be plant, in the plan, 109 are vested, which means they have five years of service. If some of the, the balance there, the seventy-five, don't, um, don't vest, they will have worked and not received any benefit. So, what we've done with the defined contribution plan is, anyone who's been here a year, i-if they would leave, they go away with a, a benefit for their time that they've, you know, put in with the district, so. And this 343 is pretty much the max. Uh, since we changed plans, it's grown to this number, but we shouldn't have any more employees in this defined benefit plan. Who administers the staff defined benefit plan? The trustee is the business manager, which was designated probably in, in plan inception, but that's, that's my role. We have an actuary and a third-party administrator, which is, that role's done by future planning associates. And they ensure that our plan is up to date with federal laws and any changes we want to see, um, we run them, run that by future planning. Our investment manager is SEI. And, uh, just, I think everybody remembers, we did a, almost a year-long search with the city in their pension plan and came up with SEI as our investment management team. And then payroll is done by SEI. And accounting and relations with retirees is the business office, specifically Amy D. Denton. I think she knows all the people. And, uh, they call her and trust her. And then auditing is done by RHR Smith. The funding status, we're going to show it in two ways. We received our actuary report on December 13th and that, that covers, the plan year is a little weird. It's like on the federal calendar, the year ending 9/30/2013. So vested benefits are $10,700,000 and we have assets against that of $8,559,000. So the funding gap, $2,144,000. And, you know, I debated this, but it's 79.99. So, eighty percent. Now what I did learn from Treasurer Pierce on last Friday was, eighty percent is a, is an acceptable, actually considered to be well-funded, if you have a policy of how you do your contributions. And so, I, I, in that case, I put down our district contribution. We always put in a hundred percent. What that means is, the actuary comes up with a minimum required contribution and, and the district always puts that in. But our policy over the last few years has been to put a hundred thousand or more in, into the plan. And in the 16 budget, that's where, that's the amount we have budgeted for.
John, is there any expectation as to what the funding status would be, uh, in the future, given this level of funding? Is, is it targeted to try to maintain eighty percent or how do they, how do they arrive at that number?
Well, it's, it's, it's a whole series of, of, um, taking basically every vested benefit and if, when it came due and how it comes due, and then projecting someone, um, someone's wages as if they're going to retire at age sixty-two. So it's, it's a little tricky. Changing to the defined contribution plan two years ago, in the long term, will help this immensely. In the short term, we don't see it much because, uh, if you, um, we added eight people to the, to that role in the last year, so they could be in the plan for sixty more years.
Well, let me comment this slightly differently then. What, what's, that eighty percent, that's the percent funded?
Yes.
The last time we did this thing?
Yes.
Is that up or down from where it was the year before that?
Last year was seventy-six percent funded, so it's up. And in 2008, when we first, well, at least I, I first started measuring, it was sixty. So, it, it's been, shown some progress. And, and the next slide, Dan, is something that, uh, the board's asked for a few times and it's, it's not anything that, um, more practical way to look at this thing. If we kept our $8.4 million in a FDIC insured bank all over the, all over and earned very little interest or no interest, we held it constant, it would last fifteen years. Um, I, I projected that benefits are growing at about five percent. That means the total amount paid to retirees goes up. There's no cost of living index for our retirees, so if you leave and, and your, your, uh, plan says you get $5,000 a year at age sixty-five, if you live to ninety-five, you're still getting that same amount. So, this is only because more people are retiring, so that's why the benefit payments go up. And I look back four years to get that rate, so.
So it's gone up two years in the last?
It has, since we, and I, I think it's been two years since I reported that, but it's, that's, that's one, another way of looking at the health of the plan.
So what's the effect of us putting more than the minimum contribution in?
It has helped us because a hundred percent, uh, a hundred percent of funded, that's what the actuaries say, needs to make it fund every, every liability we have and based on a seven and a half percent return. So, the fact that we're still below that, we've had really, really good returns and the, your specific question, that extra money's helped pump that up to get us, to get us more funded.
Okay.
Now, I, I, I sent the SEI report to you and I know that, just looking at it and, um, in, without any context, uh, isn't, wasn't great. Our, we had, I had them set up to come on January 21st and that was a meeting we switched over because of the steering committee and then our, our man Pat Blizzard was ill, so I'm sorry about that, but, um, but anyway, just to recap where we are with SEI, we moved on September 1st. And the assets, we use the same allocation that we had with our private, our prior institution, sixty percent equities and forty percent to fixed income. And the investments are valued at $8.4 million. And, um, there, there was a return of over seven percent on page 12. They show with, return with, uh, the gross return, then net of expenses against the benchmark. And before expenses, we hit the benchmark. After expenses, we were slightly below the benchmark, like point two. And, um, SEI's proposed that the district change the asset classes based on their evaluation of where our position is in markets. So I wanted to show you what that means. This is something we'll come back to at a later meeting. But the current allocation is equity of sixty percent and fixed income of forty percent. So, um, there's two major changes if you look at this. In the equities, SEI's recommending that we go into world equities and emerging markets equities and be a little bit less, um, aggressive in US large cap and in the large cap section of domestic stocks. And their thinking there is that our, we've had a really, really, uh, up, upward flow of the market and, uh, you can see the Dow sometimes sets, set a lot of records in the S and P 500. And they think that there's not the potential for growth there that there was, but there is in the world equity markets. The other change, which is big too, is core fixed income. Fixed income, bonds and government securities, uh, when plans were first set in the seventies, bonds returned a lot more, a lot better rate of return than they are now. So, SEI's, is, said, we need to have something in short term. So you see, the core fixed income goes from twenty-six percent to ten percent. And limited, shorter-term fixed income instruments would go from zero to ten. And short-term corporate, zero to five. So, those are the two main changes. One, in equities, moving away from domestic stocks to world and emerging markets. And two, changing that fixed income around. So tonight, that's just for your information. We, we don't have to act on that or anything, but I wanted you to see, be a little clear about what they're talking about.
So their, their, their recommended change isn't time-sensitive at all?
No, we can, we can choose not to do anything, but we are, they're our investment advisors, so we.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, the last thing is, the investment committee recommendation. We've talked about this for a while and it's time to do this. Just look at, at tonight, you look at, I'm trying to explain what SEI, and that's from my hearing. Uh, and what we've done in the past is, people in my office have met with, with, uh, investment advisors. And that's not been formal. The trustee's the only one at this point who, in the plan document legally, has that responsibility, but that's not, I think, I think it needs to be shared. So this is our, our recommendation, that the plan trustee, the business manager be on his committee. A member of the school board, elected official, or a member of the public selected by the board, so that the public's represented on the, on the taxpayer's side of this. Because it's, you know, you saw a $695,000 contribution in the budget. And it represented from the non-union support staff and from the union support staff. That's, that's the, that's my recommendation.
And what would the charge of this committee be?
To, here, to properly vet the investment advisors', uh, uh, rate of return, uh, listen to the advice they're giving, does it make sense? Ask questions, make sure that they. Ask questions, make sure that they they have enough. I guess vetting is a word, but that it's scrutinized. And and the to act on a recommendation that they give for our investments.
So would they determine would this would this group determine the allocations that per the chart that you had earlier just before here? Would that be what they would do?
Well, in the past, we've used our investment managers. Yeah, they would, but we've used their advice before. And so we we want to formalize it a little more.
So was it a was it a board approval thing that when you changed allocations in the past?
Yeah, it definitely has been. We haven't done it much.
So would it still be with the committee? Would the committee make a recommendation to the board or would the committee make a decision?
Well, I'd say the decision would make a, oh, the board would have it all mixed up, sorry. The committee would make a recommendation to the board. So those are the key points I wanted to have out there for discussion.
But John, how do how do employees get educated on the four various savings options that are available to them?
Well, they're they're on our website. They they definitely hear about it when they start. There are the 403B plan has requirements that we we inform them annually about that. We we haven't had information sessions for a while and I think that'd be that'd be needed.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like based on the numbers you just kind of glossed over a little bit. It sounds like these are pretty underutilized opportunities. And based on, you know, how we know investments can compound, assuming that I it's rare you see somebody starting out somewhere that is able to make that decision to contribute the 4%, but or whatever percent. But over time, if there's an understanding of what that could look like with 10 years or 20 years of of experience. I feel like that's it's a missed opportunity not to share that more proactively with employees. And and how about when you said that Beth Pierce said we're one of three districts?
That have their own retirement system. Most of the school districts and municipal governments go through Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System, VEMR's.
Yeah.
And we investigated that at length in 2010 to see if the district would move into VEMR's. At the time, we were 60-some percent funded. VEMR's was 103% funded. Now, VEMR's is 85% funded and we're 80. There's a difference in benefits, but we'd we'd still have to come up with the unfunded liability of $2 million in order to buy into VEMR's.
Well, I I remember the conversation in the past kind of got put to the back burner because that gap was so significant.
Yes.
But I'm wondering from a from a liability and management standpoint, if it wouldn't make sense to revisit looking at VEMR's again and maybe looking at covering that gap now that it's substantially smaller than it was in 2010.
Okay, I I think that would be a a project that would be maybe over a course of a year or something because it it takes a while, but yes, yeah.
I mean, does that make sense? Because because given that I the the exposure I feel like we have, because this is a significant responsibility and liability to these 343 employees and former employees. And I I just have a concern that we're kind of out on our own doing this. And and it's certainly done well, and I think we've been very responsible to slightly overfund it over time. But we're in a good position, I think, to reevaluate that.
And one of the concerns that our former superintendent had when he he helped us get connected with the state treasurer was what we're talking about it consolidations of districts. And if South Brunton is with another district, how's this look, you know, and legislation? So, yeah, it's it's good to look at it. That would be kind of a next logical step, yeah.
Are there questions or comments?
Well, happy to see that we're doing better in this regard. That's a good news thing. I'm happy to see in particular that the number of years that are covered are increasing. I think that's I think that's a really practical measure personally, much more understandable than some of the other investment parameters. But I do think it's appropriate to take another run at VEMR's and see if see if times have changed. I mean, if it's evident early in the game that it's not going to work out, maybe that's as far as we have to go, but.
Well, there's actually a new treasurer and new leadership there, so it's it's probably a good time.
And do you need any action on your recommendations on the committee, investment committee?
I think what needs to happen there is I wrote in the questions, Julie had a question, that we need to run it by an attorney, probably Bob Fletcher, to see. We've run it by future planning and the board can decide how that works. There's no prohibition from setting up a committee, but I think we need legally to get that and have have. I I think it would be Bob Fletcher craft a resolution for your for your approval. Yeah, so that would be in the next month.
So so that would come to the board as action. And then following that, this committee might be responsible for developing a plan that would look at the portfolio allocation and then potentially revisiting VEMR's as other priorities?
Yeah.
So in the meantime, are we going to hear from SEI about the the change?
Oh, sure, they can come. They can come in. I mean, he had two other. Anyway, the scheduling didn't work out, but yes, it's not that's not an issue. They're very responsive.
Okay.
Yes.
John, the city and the school district collaborated to pick SEI as the
That's right.
Common, whatever they are.
Right.
Agency, they were agent. But the two plans that the two entities have are managed separately? Is that what I'm trying to understand?
Yes. We're not.
We use this, we use the same agent, if you will, but it's two separate plans.
They had a similar recommendation to the city and the city approved it. But they had brought this to me a little earlier and in my office, we were decided divided. And we weren't at the point to say, well, here's what we think should happen with the committee. So we did, we we let it sit. So we don't have the same plan as same allocation as as the city.
We will actually, SEI wouldn't have taken us on just as a district without the city because we aren't of our size. Yeah, so it was a benefit to us to.
Yeah, but it but it didn't result in us combining the plans.
No.
Anything else? Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the academic calendar.
So we have at your place, there was a month, there was another change that came to you today. I've heard from the previous information and package. What we've done is we've busied busied the calendar even further. Part of our conversation that resulted from the most recent change occurred at our Tuesday admin meeting with another kind of relook around what we're trying to do as a district, what we need for service time and where best to place that. So that that's the reason for the change in the August start and adding some days to to the end of June, the 13th and 14th. We think again, there's importance around culminating and planning forward. So those those were really the changes that came to you most recent. A swap for August start for the adding the two more days.
And Martin Luther King Day being a full day.
Right. So Martin Luther King now will be an off day. We had that as an in-service day. That will be a complete off day and then we'll add that day for staff, teachers back in on the on the end of the of the school year 13 and 14. I don't want you to think that we won't celebrate those. We will celebrate. We'll we'll make sure that information is known. That's an important thing to me to make sure that happens. That will happen, obviously, on the Friday before the before activity occurs that we spend the time to do that. So we've also, again, important here, we've added some additional late start days. And again, and important to say that these are not days. You know, these are these are really very small chunks of time that are really well-used. We know there's just some disruptions, but when we talk about days, they're not days. They're really a very fractional portion. And what we have found, particularly at the middle and the high school, is we're having a significant amount of success moving things forward. You've you've seen some of the some of that information with PLP and PBGRs and some of that that work that's been presented to you. We're nowhere near even close to, you know, to meeting that need still. I think we still are trying to figure out how we can grab some additional time with the 189 days that we have of teachers. So that's that's where we are. I don't know if there's any specific questions that you have related to the calendar.
So to be clear, so there were nine and now there are six, seven, 16 total?
Correct.
Late start days, so that's an hour later for kids. At the high school, it's actually 20 minutes of instructional loss because they cut out FaceTime and and other pieces. And and just one other thing before you, you know, is the question of the work needs to be done. And it is one of the ways for us to look and say, well, instead of having subs in the department out to do work, this is time that we're not, you know, we're paying for anyway, for the teachers for work that we do in other ways if the kids are in school.
So there's no question, there's some lost, there's some lost instructional time. But with with the FaceTime actually goes away. Again, those are important connection times too, but that the loss of time then gets down to the 20 minutes. And again, the value of that not loading it either at the very end of the calendar, you know, or or not systemically through the calendar. This is a much, much better way. We can't do this similarly at the elementary schools. It'd be far more disruption. We can't, based on our the way our schedule is anyway with their elementary starting earlier and the close proximity to the to the middle school. So it would really have to be an end of the day. So the elementary stays as is. And again, this is a proposal for us to to really try to continue the work that, again, I think a lot of you are very aware of around what we're trying to what we're trying to move.
Can I just ask you? Has there ever been any thought given to an early release day versus a late start day for middle and high school?
Yeah, I mean, I think for us, you know, the the end of the day is a little bit more problematic, you know. There's things that, you know, the students, when you when you look at both ends, the most efficient time for us is to bring the teachers in here early. Staying consistent with kind of the messaging and the change of our times. They're most available and that end of the day with our blocks and our schedules, it's more disruptive to do it at the other end. So when we look at it, lost instructional time. Again, there is loss, but it's most appropriate to be loading in front.
What I think about, David, is that, you know, for families that have a middle school student and an elementary school student, they have to accommodate afternoons and find coverage and mornings to find cover. And it just it sort of extends that family having to find coverage for the time that they're coming home early or leaving later. And if there was any possibility, and I know it's probably too late now, but to coordinate that so that they're not. The days of coverage are spread out.
Right.
For, you know.
Yes, so, you know, listen, I'm not I'm I'm not wanting to say that, you know, this is the optimal, right? The optimal would be that there's just days built into the calendar, which are, you know, we've got 180 student days and 189 or however many days we need have zero disruption to academics. When you get into the conversation of substitutes and how that all happens currently within the state, you know, where state programming are asking teachers to come out to be, you know, to be informed and updated. That is a is a big requirement. So balancing all this is difficult. I get it. And so I'm not wanting to sugarcoat that there's some loss of instruction, but it's minimal in comparison to what we need to be getting done. And again, I, you know, we're faced with these, you know, pretty significant expectations. And we could put our head down and put it in the sand and we're not going to get there. And we're really trying to think, you know, as proactive as as we can to to get there.
And and I'm just saying, you know, could there be some coordination with with middle school and elementary school in particular?
Yeah, so to tag those half day, you know, to tag a a half day on for those students on the same day. So there's a disruption, yeah.
So a family doesn't have a late start day for their middle school student and a couple of days later have an early, you know, it just.
This is, I I think that I think adding seven more late start days is going to make some community members really upset. And I I think it's significant for families. I understand what you're saying, but I think it's a lot.
Yeah, I have to, I mean, I have to say the feedback I get is around kind of in in aggregate on the calendar is really the amount of time kids are out of school. And I understand this is convenient for staff, but for families that have set work times where they either drop the kids off or they're, you know, waving to them on the bus as they're leaving for work. It it's disruptive to families.
Yeah, I I get that. I mean, we obviously, those of you know that we've had it and we're adding additional as a result. So, you know, again, I think, you know, we have, because we've been doing this, we've definitely been fielding, you know, a lot of the, you know, questions. And I think things, at least from my perspective, recognize are disruptive, but there's there's some general common understanding around, particularly the high school, middle school needs that are coming out with information that's gone out to parents around around the important work. And I think the students are messengers to their parents saying, you know, this is, you know, what's going on in my in my in my school. I I get it. I mean, there's no, there's no easy thing here. Again, we could talk about all of the things that are going to that are coming upon us. If you listen to Rebecca Holcomb and some of the the requirements that are coming in 16, 17, and 18, we're we're not going to make it here. And we don't have, again, part of our work contractually, which is what we're working on administratively with Karen to say, we're going to have to come back to you and talk about something very pretty significantly different in what we do for for staff. So.
If you add up the hours of these 16 late start days, how many instructional hours is that?
Well, as Stuart said, really, it's it's instructional hours of probably, you've got 45 minutes really, right, of instructional time times, you know.
The business picked the students up one hour earlier.
Right.
Later, excuse me.
Yeah.
So and and it's made up on those particular days by taking, for example, the high school FaceTime out, T A out of here. So that academically, it's, you know, 20 minutes at the high school, 40 minutes at the middle school.
How long?
And I'm.
FaceTime is.
Twenty minutes, 20, 25 minutes.
Yeah, I don't know, Patrick, you know, I I want to say this to you because, you know, I don't, I can't represent like the scheduling piece of the high school. I know that Patrick said 20 minutes to us, but what I can say is this, is that they're doing, and you'll see next week when or two weeks from now when I do the report on 2.10, the incredible work that they're doing on the high school right now on the proficiency base, graduation, which you eventually will have to, you know, pass as a as a policy, and the assessment that needs to go with that. So it really is that this is a very intense time professional development wise. And so we're just trying to figure out what's the best way in a minimally disruptive way to get this work across. And also in the most efficient way. Because, you know, like I said, the other way, and it's not to say that we would never do this, but the other way is for departments to meet, you know, off-site or in a room somewhere while subs are doing, you know, their work so that the work can get done. And so one of the things we're trying to be also aware of is how do we, as you've asked, you know, reduce the cost of substitute teachers and also have teachers in their classroom with the kids.
So are you saying that if these days went in, our sub costs would go down? I'm just asking.
That's one of the intentions, but I can't tell you the sub costs went down because there's only one part of the sub cost.
Yeah, I understand, but.
But in terms of professional development costs for subs, that would be our intent.
I mean, it's so it's what 12 hours, 12 hours of instruction.
Well, and I'm I'm looking at that and looking at state. I'm actually coming from a different angle, which is state statute of student days.
175. One seventy-five.
And that, that's basically two days, two student days.
Twelve hours.
That are gone because of, of late starts, right, approximately?
Yeah, twelve hours, twelve hour, I mean, you're, you're right.
Assuming it's six hours.
And I'm saying forty-five minutes.
So, do we put ourselves at risk with our calendar of not meeting our state obligation?
No, we don't. Again, part of the calendar calculations is if you're in for a majority of the day and you've, and you feed the students, you know, um, you know, lunch, it counts as a day. So, we're, we're not in violation of our one seventy-five, even if we had one seventy-five under this, you know, this, this, this model.
I didn't know we had equalized days.
So, could you, just for our sake, could you take the seven days that you're adding here and make them afternoons? I mean, because, like, could you do the work you're doing in the morning after school? Or...
The, the real problem with that, Julie, is then you miss a lot of the teachers who are coaches and, uh, you know, have a variety of after-school activities in the morning, you know, basically everybody's available.
Well, again, we lose...
Early release days, wouldn't they still be...
That's, that's only at the elementary. We don't have any early release days.
No, no, I'm saying if you changed them to early release day and did the instruct, the professional development in the afternoon instead of the morning, they would still be, be part of their school day still, so you wouldn't run into the coaching.
You get into this, but still, you'd have to cancel those after-school activities.
The reason we went to the, so it used to be that everybody had early release days, and there were four-year, um, for the high school and four-year for the elementary school. By doing this and, and, you know, we had the staff meeting ahead of time as well, we gained time for less time out on those given days, you know? So, the model of the late starts, the one we've had till now, the TLCs, has allowed us to do a lot more work than the efficiency of, you know, having the school, you know, students eat lunch, then leave, you know, getting started, a- and so on. And we have looked, in fact, you know, could we do early at the elementary school because it is less disruptive and more productive than having three days or two days to have the nine that we've had? So, we've found it to be a very effective model for getting a lot of work done. I, I don't, you know, if you had a one hour at the end of the day, I, I just don't see it working as...
Yeah, I understand it's not convenient for you, but thi- this is really inconvenient for families.
So, what I, what, again, I, I, I don't, I, I don't want to negate that. I think that's critically important. And we, and again, we've had days, we've had our, our late start days, you know, currently. And we've continued, and we will need to continue to work hard to inform communities, the community about why we're doing this. And, um, you know, they want us to be prepared and ready, and it's important for us to prepare their children to be ready. So, again, I mean, I get it. We're going to need to really work hard to communicate as we have today, but with these additional days, why we're doing this. P L Ps, P B G Rs, you know, um, transferable skills are upon us. Here, here's where we are, and here's how we're working to do that. Again, when kids come in late, there's nothing that doesn't, it does not prohibit us from working with the students and say, while you're on a late start, these are the expectations that, that you need to be coming in with. Again, with some of our technology, we can do this. So, we, we, number one, yes, it's disruptive. Two, we've tried to pick the least disruptive model. Three, we have a lot on our plate, and we're trying to make a, a valiant effort to make sure we're, we're readying ourselves for these upcoming mandates, and they're not false. And so, he- here's where we are. So, I mean, I, I, I get it. I, I can't give you the, the rosy perfect picture here, you know?
So, is this the, uh, can we have some sort of guarantee that this is a one-year deal, or do you project this to be the new norm?
Yeah, I, I don't want to say that this is a, a one-year deal. I, I think we would need to evaluate it as we have done today. And we have had great success here at the middle and the high school around what I would say, getting a significant amount of work done in a very short period of time on an ongoing basis. And that's been with our seven, seven TLCs. Nine TLCs to date. So, we're going to evaluate it. Now, I will tell you, if we're not making the progress in this, we're, I'm going to need to say, we've got to come up with a different model. We know that everything added on to the end of the year or the beginning of the year doesn't add to the continuity that's really needed to move these things along, so, anyway.
I think, Martin, one of the things I'm hearing you say, which should be a, a concern I share, is that this becomes a precedent on a move, going-forward basis, and, um, you know, I mean, my, my own bias would be to approve this on a one-year basis only.
To be able to get some facts on how it works.
With the understanding that it, it is disruptive to families, um, and there's an expectation that, um, you know, carving that many hours out, you know, shouldn't be a, a sustainable or an ongoing, um, model.
Yeah, I, I think it's fair. It is a one, calendar is an annual, uh, thing anyway, and I think, you know, the takeaway can be that we owe you some facts on how, how it went and some feedback from parents, you know? And again, that includes you, as you get information along the way, that you forward that to us, and we're able to keep track of that and, and, um, and keep you informed about how it worked or not. So, I'm not trying to overtalk it. It's, it, it is disruptive, but it's needed.
So, any, any other comments on, specifically on the late start days? I had a couple other questions. Have we got contiguous days at the start of school as we had intended to? We don't have that break in there that we used to have, a couple of days in the beginning?
No, you see, we, we ramp up with district convocation and services, and then we're right into the, you know, we're right into the first day of classes for all students on the twenty-fifth. Again, earlier, we've gotten some questions about why that is so early, but again, that's, that's the way the calendar is tracking this year, starting on the twenty-fifth, and then right into a full week in the thirty-first of the, uh, fourth of September.
Okay, and then we did get, um, an additional question from a community member on the, um, recommendation on the holidays, if you could just speak to that?
Sure. And so, um, when we last talked about the calendar, um, particularly to some of the holidays that were out there and trying to be mindful of them, um, we definitely recognize that in some places where holidays are occurring when we're in school, that we need to be extremely sensitive and informed about, um, you know, what, what the opportunities are for parents. So, this is particularly, we, we mark them as religious, religious observance days, and we can, we're going to make sure that that's communicated uniformly across the district. It is in handbooks, but we want to do a little bit more than that and make sure that it's known. This meeting is in fact doing some of that, we hope, um, but we want to make sure that that's, uh, clear. We also want to be clear that, um, we don't, in our calendar of activities and after-school activities, we don't have those happening on those days, um, so that it puts students in, in a place where they are having to make a choice or a decision. So, that's where we currently are, um, and remember, if it's a religious observance day that's marked, it does not count as their, you know, an absentee day, um, yeah, the way in which we look at, uh, attendance.
David, um, in that handbook where it says that, um, you'll inform parents more broadly of, you know, religious observance absences and, and what those are, there are some that may, we may not note on the calendar.
Agreed.
And so, I, I just would want families to know that if there are other religious observances other than this one, that they may, um...
That's right. I mean, this is a particular, we had some questions specific to, um, in this case, want, you know, a, a, a area holiday, but it pertains, again, we have a multitude of, of religiouses, religions that could be observed on a particular day. And again, it's our hope that by informing folks broadly of this, we'll, we'll be able to, um, ensure that they're not being penalized for that. The problem will be where we aren't necessarily totally aware, and then an activity gets scheduled, or is already scheduled, if, if they're not widely exercised in our calendar, right? If we don't know that, you know, there's five students that have a particular religious observance day happening somewhere. If we aren't really aware of that, it's going to be hard for us to dodge some of those activities. But again, I think, I think we have, right now, we have a pretty good pulse on, you know, what this means to our current school enrollees. But again, we'll always have to keep mindful of that, and certainly our neighbors, you know, just to our north in Burlington have, have certainly had to work at this.
So, David, if this calendar's approved with these extra late starts, how is that going to be communicated to families?
Well, part of it is, we're going to, we're communicating it here. We will make it available. We will push it out to folks. It posts up on our, our website. Um, you know, I would encourage, I will certainly at the high school and middle school, we'll push out the calendar to parents with a blurb about why there's an increase. And again, part of my office and working with the administrators would be to be really clear about why there's an increase in that, uh, in these numbers of days, so that we're coming right back to some of the goals and expectations that, that we're trying to move, so that people have clarity around that as well.
And notice.
Yeah.
Notice, because in the past, there's been a lot of things that haven't been communicated to parents, and that's a real frustration.
Sure. So, part of, part of the difficulty with the calendar, and this is not an excuse, but different from the elementary, what goes on to what ha- happens on the high school. And so, when we put assessment days, for instance, we, you know, and that was really my desire, to say, I want to get the calendar having everything on it, but I put assessment days on here, then, then it, you know, if we talk about colors on the, on that, it, it becomes ridiculous. And does that pertain to me? So, a- at some level, we have to kind of be elementary, middle and high school, so there's some logical sense of that. But again, to Diane's point, you could have a middle schooler and an elementary. So, we need to make sure that folks are able to point to the website, get their information, whether it's elementary calendar or the middle. And we do have a means on our calendar where you can have a joint calendar share off of our, off of our website, and you can have a feed that pulls them together for you. So, part of this is making sure that people are informed, Julie, as you said, and pushing that out. And again, I certainly plan to do that.
Other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen, sixteen academic calendar as presented?
So, whoop.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Are you abstaining or...
I'm abstaining.
I'm not saying me.
So, um, but there's a caveat in there that you'll bring it, we'll bring it, obviously annually, we'll come back and you'll see some, some of the data. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item nine, master planning, financial stewardship, and city school collaboration.
Yep. So, um, we did have a meeting today, Elizabeth, um, um, Pat Nowak, and Kevin Dorn and myself. And so, we, we did, um, meet and talked about a series of things, and one of the ones that we thought was, the two areas really were master planning and visioning, that we talked about kind of the work that we're doing and kind of just making sure we're, we're, uh, clear about where we're headed. And then the second part was really around this, this legislative, uh, activity, which actually connects into my superintendent, the superintendent's report as a request by the board to kind of talk more about that. One of the things that we came out, I shared this date, I think, a, a bit ago, but the legislative breakfast conversation to continue with both city council and board, there's two kind of hold dates, could be both dates, but hold dates of the second, March second and March fifth, both currently kind of holding at seven-thirty in the morning, for about an hour or so would be just to do some connections, um, and share, um, you know, some of the legislative activity that, um, we've been reading about or following and making, you know, kind of connections and trying to be helpful to the process. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else kind of on the legislative or the city legislative conversation?
Has a date been set for the, uh, public review of the, your master planning?
So, yes, and I'm going to come back to master plan unless there's other questions on kind of the legislative activities.
No, I think that, I think the goal with the legislative activity was to just really kind of get an assessment of which bills, there's a lot of bills, particularly in the education area, to sort of find out which ones seem to have legs, and maybe to make sure that, um, we're being proactive about presenting, um, positions to our legislators before those actually have action taken.
So, that's that, and it, it was also, as a placeholder in my superintendent's report, which we don't really need to talk about more, um, since we, we covered it here. Uh, master planning and visioning, again, the conversation around that, um, obviously being clear on the charge that was set by both the, the board, uh, school board and the council, and, uh, looking at kind of next steps. So, the next steps currently, uh, we have a, a meeting, another task force meeting on the ninth and the nineteenth, and then we have currently, which will become more, more publicized, is the thirty-first of March will be the first community meeting. Uh, currently, there's a lot of work going on to take the options that have been provided. There's, I think, seven options currently on the table, um, and we're working on, and John, um, and city folks are working to come up with some cost analysis estimates on what those each would be. The idea here will be on the community meeting is there'll be, the options will be provided. There'll be opportunities, perspectives on both city and school, kind of highlights, and then there'll be some sort of a cost implication, tax implication, uh, metric that will be applied to that, um, with, with a caveat of disclaimer that once you go out, it becomes, you know, less and less, um, less and less clear. So, um, that's where we are with master plan. Lot of information flowing between, in the other paper, all of our information, um, is up on the website. Group is working very hard, in some cases, I would say harder than they need to because they're trying to essentially solve it before they solicit feedback in some way. So, it's, there's been really, really active engagement, hard work, lot of conversation, and I've appreciated, I know a lot of you have been able to stop by and, and sit in for, for a chunk of time, and that's, that's been noticed, and I appreciate you being able to do that from time to time.
Any other questions or comments?
Did you say there was a date set for that?
Thirty-first, community meeting.
I'm sorry.
March thirty-first, sorry. We have a lot of work to do on publicizing that, Martin. Notice it's not on April first.
Yeah, the other area, um, we talked a little bit about today is the, the reception that, um, we get within the community around city-school collaboration has been really positive, and when we can give specific examples, um, as we did during the budget presentation on Channel Seventeen and, and the candidate forum around the pension fund, around, um, the mechanic, around, um, the solar project, I mean, when, we've got specific examples where there's been, um, real collaboration between the two, that's being really well-received. So, even though materially, um, it may represent smaller aspects from a total budget impact standpoint, I do think, um, it, it, uh, gives a lot of good visibility to an activity that I think a lot of towns aren't experiencing. So, um, I think we're on the right track there.
I do have a process question about this. So, um, many times in those meetings, there's some discussion about who makes the final decision about this, and the, the last meeting, there was talk about the steering committee making the final decision, so...
Yeah, you may have heard that, but we've, we've, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, so, I, yes, it, it is a school board decision, yes?
Absolutely. But again, the steering committee has no voting authority, and we've made that crystal clear. Uh, and the charge that's been shared with the entire group, and again, we started out the meeting last night, uh, Kevin and I, because we felt there needed to be a, kind of a, a refocus, um, although we think most everyone gets it, there's a few that maybe don't, but it's good to talk about it. And, um, the steering committee certainly will hear it, but the collective boards, city council, and the school board, um, will be the ones that will need to make decisions on where to go from there, if there's options that are provided, which is part of the charge, is to give some options. So, it, it is, it is right, there's definitely some avenues that, that some of the folks are going down, and it's not because they don't care, it's sometimes they just get off on, you know, some, some different avenues, so...
Okay, all right, move on to, uh, agenda item ten, public school choice.
So, you have information in front of you. Again, I apologize for not getting this out earlier. Again, collaboration back, uh, with this, with the, uh, the agency, and... Again, collaboration back with the agency, and providing, trying to get some clarity around your specific questions around exercising the lottery. When we last left off, there was really questions around, do we even have to exercise the lottery? Do we have to have any acceptance of one, or can it be zero? And so...
And can we direct the one into the big picture program?
So, the recommendation that I'm putting forth, whether you want to do this or not, I'm recommending that you accept one, exercise the lottery, and that one student could go either into the high school or into the program within the high school, the big picture program. I recognize that any act of accepting one to the board is a concern, based on the current funding structure. However, as I look at the waiver process, and to follow through on the waiver process, it would be, I think, it would be difficult for us to move that. I did ask, you know, the deadline is February 1st, I've kept them informed. If we were going to need additional time, we probably would need to do another, we'd have to have, you know, some sort of a meeting prior to our next meeting to make a decision. The timeline begins to, you have to allow people to apply, to exercise the lottery, there's timelines that go. So, my recommendation is that you accept one. There's a lot of activity currently going on in the legislature around particularly the choice, H49, and that may be one area that we want to talk a little bit more about in the future, and around making sure there's some hope that that moves forward. So, let me just stop and answer questions.
So, if I understand that correctly, interpretation is that we would not meet the requirement for a, in a practical sense, for a waiver, a waiver from this, and therefore, we would be obliged, if you will, to accept at least one person, one student, on a lottery basis?
Yeah, I think you actually have an argument where you could say, we want to accept zero, right? Because it's about capacity and your ability to, that there's not hardship, right, on the high, on behalf of the high school. So, I think you could likely do a waiver. I think that making that connection, to say that there's hardship with one student, I think, you know, the agency is likely going to perhaps have some significant issues with that, you know, that you can't accept one in, even though it's a cost. So, again, I don't know, they have not had to exercise a waiver to date.
But it isn't just one, it's one plus one plus one plus one.
Plus one, yeah.
For four years.
Yep. Yeah, and what I would tell you is that we can, and depending on what happens here in the legislative session, particularly with where we are with ed funding, if it doesn't happen, then I think we would be better positioned to put ourselves into a waiver process that starts out clearly because of the, you know, actions or non-actions, then we're in a place where we do want to exercise a waiver that's based on the connection and correlation to funds affecting our students.
How are we not in that position now?
You could, I'm just, I'm telling you that at the present time, the agency hasn't had to exercise waiver. I think that you'd have a difficult time saying that one student, and I get one student, one student, one student, but I think you'd have, we'd have a difficult time being granted a waiver.
I think you're just asking for scrutiny under the law, which may not turn out favorable for us. I mean, I think we should have one as well.
And I had a question on the following page, and you may have covered this before, but it looks like there's a sibling who is planning to attend, does that count as the one?
It's in our count already. I believe that's right.
But is that another commitment? Because we, I thought we grandfathered.
Yeah, we grandfathered certain kids.
Folks in the past, and we weren't going to keep that practice going forward.
Well, we looked at our exposure, remember? When we talked about exposure, when we brought kids in, we allowed that, and we said we did not want to disallow, and so we looked at that total exposure then.
But it was current for that moment, this sounds.
Right, and so this student, or in that period, this has continued to be our exposure. So, we were clear on that exposure back then.
So, this was included in that exposure assessment?
Correct.
This particular student's sister is a senior, and we would get tuition for her, but the freshman would not be.
Right.
But that, but the freshman would not count as the one additional student?
No, that would be already in the, already in the count.
I'm just suggesting, why shouldn't they count as the one additional student? Because we're actually making...
Then we wouldn't exercise the lottery, right? And we're not exercising the lottery.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what the requirements are in the lottery, but if siblings was a category of requirement, then...
Yeah.
Because now we're making a commitment of two students times four years times 15 grand.
Well, again, our past decisions, not necessarily saying that, you know, if we could go back there, maybe we would make some changes, but our past decisions allowed for this to occur, the one simply allows the lottery to be exercised, and, because we've had others that we allowed in last year as well, right, under the, you know, that exception, where there was a sibling already in, we looked at those exposures, and we went over those exposures.
Did we put a cap on that period of time? I thought that was...
Well, we did, we did for the period in which those that were in, right? So, as John said, they're going to graduate, that was our total exposure. So, you're right, our exposure will go down, you know?
But we can't keep that exposure into perpetuity.
That's correct, but what we knew is that those students that were, that were within the, that exception, had siblings that were going to graduate out. So, we knew our total exposure.
So, when we...
So, we're going to curtail here if there isn't a change.
So, if we exercise the lottery, then are we committed to that student's siblings? And that student's siblings wouldn't count towards the lottery or a cap?
No, not unless you want to make that. I'm going to recommend you don't continue that, you know? You have one lottery.
So, the exposure would be limited to the one additional student that came in?
Yep.
Well, what other, do we only have one more sibling exposure?
We've checked, the high school checked in guidance, double-checked all the parents. So, this is the last exposure we have on a sibling, resulting from our old school choice with the four districts.
So, you remember, we were ramping out of those students that we received money for, right? Because we've grandfathered those paying districts, and so that exposed, this exposure is connected to that ramping out of the Act 150 money following the kids, right?
Because we committed to those siblings.
Right.
I think we're just looking for assurance that that's it.
Yeah, unless, I mean, I'm not recommending that you do anything.
And what are the lottery criteria?
It's outlined, you know, it's outlined, you know, submission, you know, there's a whole process by which you have to go through the lottery process to, you know, submit. There's a period of review, there's then, you know, decisions, it's all outlined.
Is there somewhere we can read that lottery information? Like, is it online or something like that?
Yeah, it's right in the, it is online, I can send it to you.
At the Agency of Ed?
Yep.
Okay.
It's all outlined in the, in an 822 of 16.
822.
And I can send it to you quickly.
And so, can we reflect in the minutes that this is the last sibling exposure we have, so that when we talk about this next year and don't remember what we said, we can have some discussion about it? Or not?
Well, we have to do this every year, and I think we can so note through the minutes that, you know, here's where we are, and, I mean, quite honestly, I think if there hasn't been a change, then we can talk about a waiver process much earlier, you know? I mean, probably, we can talk about it this year, you know, around what we're going to do with the current situation, so.
And I just want to say that I would like to support siblings, I would like to be able to keep families together and have siblings come to our school, their older siblings are here, and I'm just really disappointed that the way that this law is set up really doesn't allow families to stay together and stay in the same school system, because it's a lottery.
Yeah, no question, and, you know, I think the testament of the change, the intent was to increase, and actually, it's not done that.
Well, and it's not, and it's not family-centered, I mean, it really isn't. Because the lottery system, you're not, siblings aren't going to necessarily both be picked, and the old system where money followed students, you know, anyway, I just want to say that I'm really disappointed that this actually, that has that impact on families.
So, back in 2007, there was 315 students that exercised this in the state of Vermont, and we're down at 298 now, and 14 in the summary. So, when you talk about, you know...
That's one per district.
Opening all, opening all kinds of additional opportunities for kids, that correlation...
What were the numbers again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to give this to you.
315 was the original, it's down to 298.
How many?
I'm surprised it's that many still, honestly.
Well, across the state, how many people are exercising?
That includes the people that we allowed to stay in because they were, they were siblings of those that were there.
Yeah, that's right.
So, that number is expected to continue to drop?
That's correct.
But it's going to be at least one per district?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what other people...
That's what the law basically is, the lottery of one.
Remember, there are other districts around us are doing different things with this. They're looking at those that are, you know, they're simply doing a replacement, those that graduate, and they're giving opportunity for the same coming in. So, their strategy is different, and I have, again, on my...
Even though they've lost the funding to go with those people? Are they crazy people?
No, they're not crazy, they're my colleagues, but...
So, I, what, yeah, what...
It's not, we don't have, there's, there aren't that many high schools, so it's, it's more than one. I don't know how many high schools there are, but it's high school choice, so it's not, you know, elementary.
It's restricted to high school?
Yeah, and when we, again, when we went through this, when the law changed, you know, we've gone through this, you know, change over time, and that, there was a huge insignificant difference, you know, happening, and I think people are in a wait-and-see mode, we've been in a wait-and-see for a couple, you know, three years now, so.
Well, it makes me think in hindsight that there might have been more community engagement with legislators who passed 129 had districts like us made a decision not to allow siblings to continue and not participate in the lottery if money didn't follow, because I think, I think the, it certainly doesn't seem to be accomplishing what it intended.
And again, there's a fair amount of conversation, H49, I think that's the right bill that's talking about specifically school choice, and that resources, I don't know exactly what they call it, resources or money, or ADM is following student, a student, so, we think, I certainly think they're on the right track with that.
So, do I have a motion to accept administration's recommendation?
Can I ask a question first? Or I can ask the question after the motion?
You could ask them.
Go ahead.
My question has to do with, how does this link in with student, with the big picture program?
So, we're saying just, it's just one, and the student could go to big picture, or it could go into high school choice.
Is there a separate opening in big picture beyond that?
No.
So, this student could go either into any program that we support?
So, based on the lottery application and what they're requesting, then the lottery will determine...
But I think last meeting, we were talking about there being a separate.
Yep, we're not...
And we're not doing that anymore.
I think, you know, we've talked about this, and we think we're not wanting to complicate or cloud the issue currently, it's one, exercise it.
Yeah, it's fine. I wish it weren't this way, but...
You know that.
I said fine, I didn't mean fine, it's not fine, I understand.
Which is another negative repercussion, because big picture is a very unique program that people seek out and could benefit from, and it enriches our district, and because we can only have one for both school pro...
Changes things.
Yeah.
Well, again, a part of this is getting back to what Elizabeth said, it, hopefully the conversation that we're having now and others will maybe bring some light to what we're trying to do around, you know, more appropriate choice options in Vermont, and 129 or H49, maybe there'll be some folks, and that's where we need to make sure people are communicating that.
All right. Now, do I have a motion to accept administration's recommendation that we set the lottery number at one for either the high school or the big picture program for the calendar year 2015-16?
So, I might as well move on all the hot words.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm not voting.
Looks like we have to break the tie.
Are you abstaining or voting no, just for the record?
Oh, yeah, right.
Abstaining.
Does that mean it still prevails?
And you're abstaining.
No, you got to break it.
Send Dan?
And I'm abstaining.
I'm going to have to get my book out and see on what grounds people can abstain. I will vote aye, and the motion passes. All right. We'll move on to the elevator project update.
So, we, I'm going to let John do the most of the talking here, just updating on kind of the current status of the high school elevator project.
And bond projects, I didn't have it on the agenda correctly. Just one sheet, there's, there should be a big divide there at, in the middle, there's a bold March 4th, that's, there should be a divide there, so it doesn't, but anyway. There's a sheet that says information, key dates, and decision points.
I don't think they have that, is that, that's in their board, in their packets?
Yeah, it went out in the mail, yeah.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah.
So, briefly, the high school elevator, the pre-qualification requests for proposals went out on February 6th after our last board meeting, and it went to major local contractors as well as advertising the Free Press, and works in progress. So, that information's due back next week.
It should be in the package.
I will analyze it with Doran Whittier, and do everything we can to get it to you on Friday, so it can be looked at at the board meeting on March 4th. The high school window project, and since the last meeting, we had a mandatory walkthrough, and there were some interested contractors there. Bids are due this next week, and we'll have a recommendation to the board on February 27th. Yeah, I would say, that project's a tough one, and I'll save my comments till what we see comes in, so. And then, high school restrooms, our key focus is on that next week. We're meeting with Patrick Burke and Tim Duff, the architect from Weeman Lampier, who did the ADA design, and we're going to see how far our money can go, and also include Jennifer Murray from the library because of their need, and we'll update you on March 4th. So, the two action items that are coming up on the next meeting are, one, to review the pre-qualification recommendation that we present to you for contractors. If there's someone selected, or more than one at that point selected, they will be giving full plans and then prepare their bids, their estimates, they have 30 days to do that, and we'll consider that in April. The high school window project, we'll have the proposals and we'll analyze those, we'll get raw data to you on Friday, and then any more diligence we have to do for references and that kind of thing, we'll do prior to the meeting, so that we cement that, so. And then, we, the high, or the middle school elevator, when we get to the payments later on, there's a punch list there, and I'll just talk about that at that point, so.
Thank you, John. Further questions or comments? Further questions or comments? All right, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
So, already covered the legislative activity and kind of board administrative response, unless you want to talk more about that. Military Compact Commission, again, I, I want to be sensitive to, you know, things I say yes to, but really, out of the Superintendent's Association, there's kind of these committees or opportunities where the association will often ask, and so, obviously, you're aware that I have had some military experience in the past, similar to transient population of students, we also have military families that are moving and/or have guardians, moms and dads that are also deployed, so the Compact Commission really just is an arm to keep people informed about making sure that we're doing our due diligence around, making sure that, you know, children are kept in the forefront and being supported, both physically in their stay, as also, and as well as some of the rules and regulations that surround them. So, it's really, what it entails is an annual meeting, and it entails some email around some of the compact expectations. I will tell you that to date, you know, I have not heard much about the compact and what it does, but I think there's an important part of what we should be doing for our families who may have, you know, loved ones deployed, so, that's, that's what I'm gonna do for the, for the agency, actually, I met with him briefly yesterday while I was down just before I testified, so I wanted to just make sure you knew that. Budget communication update, I think we're on target, there's always seems to be more that we can do. Our website's up, we've had quite a bit of activity, according to Donna, on early voting or absentee voting information, so that's been, I think, a positive. We've done PTOs, we've done staff, senior locations, I've gone and met with folks at Allenwood, I'm gonna get them wrong, Allenwood, folks-
Pines.
Pines, thank you.
I'm reading it.
And, yeah, thanks, I guess I could do that. Then there was one other location, we also dropped off information there for them to be able to access and ask if they want more information to come back. Patrick has been, is our, you know, diligent around tweeting information, administrators went out today with information to parents around absentee ballot, early voting, again, and we, we did that and kind of linked, linked to the, you know, to our website where they can get that information. Front Porch Forum, again, Delina was not around, but Patrick, I think, assisted us in getting some info out on Front Porch Forum, and again, other paper, Corey and staff have been great around getting information out, we have, out tomorrow, we have more information, the insert's gonna be there, yeah, so.
All right. Martin?
I did talk with Donna Kinville about what we could or could not do. We can stand outside the poll where people are generally allowed to stand, and we can have signs saying vote for the budget, you know, support the budget, what, whatever. I would propose, let me throw this out for discussion, that we try to man the three polling stations, I'm happy to stay down at Orchard all day, because I have other reasons to do so, and, and have a sign that doesn't do that, but have, have a sign so people know who, who's there, saying, you know, something like, ask me about the school budget, something, you know, not, not, you know, people feel uncomfortable standing out with a sign that says vote for the school budget, just, just to try to be a presence at the polls and be able to try to tell and answer questions as an outreach, so I throw that out for folks. I, I'm planning on doing that down at Orchard, but I leave it to you folks whether you think it's a good idea for the other two polling spots.
And I, I plan to be out, probably between the three locations a little bit-
Right.
-throughout the day. So-
And there's main times as well, from what I understand, there's morning, then noon, and then the evening time.
I can certainly devote some time to doing that, I just, we need to do a little logistics planning, that's all, so we don't, and the idea is to have one person at least at each place, not have us all be at one place, right?
Yeah, so if we can-
I would, I would think, I would think because it's not taking the position that the school can, we can pay with our school board budget for signs that say, ask me about the, the school budget, you know, if it was gonna be vote for the school budget, I'd be happy to kick in whatever money, but I don't, I, I, I feel a little less comfortable doing it that way, as well.
You say, ask me why you should vote yes on the school budget?
Ask me why you should vote yes on the school budget, that, I would, I, if anybody's willing to carry that sign, I'm, I'm happy to invest in that sign.
Well, if you want to come up with a sign design or what you want it to say, we can certainly make sure that that's done. Well, what do you all think, I mean, do you think, do you want to be more pushing the vote, or?
I think being more present is, would be a good thing.
But do you, as far as a sign, do you think we should be saying?
I, I think something that draws attention, I don't know.
Right, because if candidates will have signs-
Yeah.
And if you're just standing there, nobody knows who you are, why you're there.
No, no, I definitely, the question is sign that says vote yes, or a sign that just says ask questions.
Yeah, I mean, if we could get-
Because it depends, because it's-
We're not talking about a big volume, we're talking about three signs, basically.
Yeah, we're talking three signs, I'm, that's what I'm happy to pay for.
Honestly, I think we'd get more activity if it said, ask me a question, than if it said, vote yes.
Ask me a vote.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, or, or, Elizabeth, ask me, you know, why I should, or, let me tell you why you should vote yes for the budget, or ask me about, no, I, just, I think, ask, ask me about the school budget. Got that, Delina, you gonna make some signs for us? Get some sixth graders to get out some stencils?
Can we get some rap videos?
Ooh, that would be a good idea. So, we can, we can certainly do that. Donna, you know, typically at the end of the night, we have, we have kind of waited, you know, in, in certain areas, or we've tallied out, and she's gonna be quickly to the town office, or to the city office, and I, I plan to be there, just so she can, and then I plan to inform, you, you can all come there, or you can wait, last time I think, Elizabeth and somebody else-
Diane, yeah.
So, we kind of sat together and did the, added, added the votes up, but I plan on being there at the city office, and we'll send out a really quick, I mean, I can, I'll probably send some updates as, as I know anything, but certainly happy to, to be there with me if you wish, but that's, I plan on doing that.
But it's like 7:50 or something?
Yeah, right, yeah, I usually will head over there around seven, I'm usually around, you know, I've been around the schools as I have in the past, but, your choice. So, I'm hearing yes to the sign, ask me about the school budget signs, three of them, I'm hearing Martin would, would most likely be at Orchard and figure out logistics between the, the other two locations.
I don't mind being at Tuttle for an hour or two.
Okay.
John?
I have some news from the Agency of Education, Brad James, 89% of the preliminary budgets have been submitted. The two key factors are education spending per pupil from those 89% of the districts is up 3.15%, and ours is up 1.67%. The overall education spending, I'm sorry, boy, I wanted to get this on the record wrong.
Yeah.
The, the, education spending per pupil is up 3.15%, ours is up 0.2%.
2%, wow.
And the overall education spending, the draw from the Ed Fund, ours is 1.67%, and the other districts who've reported so far are just over four, 4.02%.
Can you email us those?
Yeah, I'll share it.
That'd be helpful.
And once again, it's not all the districts, and he's exhorting the 10% that don't have them in, to get them in, so the legislature can work with the numbers, but that's what we have.
Can you email us another copy of that sheet, too, that are working?
Sure. I'll put a little footnote on here, so it's-
One other question about Front Porch Forum, are we still planning on?
Well, Diane drafted a statement, did that get circulated?
Nope.
The Front Porch Forum?
I sent it in.
To Front Porch Forum, or to?
No, to, I thought I sent it to you.
I haven't, I don't think I sent it.
And, because you wrote back to me.
Well, our goal is actually to get it in-
I said, can you let, can you circulate it?
Yeah, to get it like next Friday or Monday.
It was just a little blurb.
No problem, I'm just drawing a blank, so.
Yeah, Diane was gonna circulate, we, we kind of, Diane crafted it, and I gave a little bit of feedback, and we were gonna run it by the board, so, we'll run that by the board, it won't be anything really different than what you've seen, but the goal would be to get that posted in Front Porch Forum toward the end of next week, or even, even, well, I guess I'd say toward the end of the week, or possibly Monday.
I think I had a wrong figure in there, David, that-
Oh, right, and I forgot, right?
And that you crafted, so.
You're right, oh, now I remember.
So, I mean, not having seen it, though, I would like it to be as much of an advocacy piece as we can fit in the format of Front Porch Forum, and that data John just said-
Well, that's actually, that's really new information, so, why don't we circulate, we, we've got a few days to look at this one, because Patrick's is in this week, and we'll have the insert tomorrow, there'll be a little blurb in next week's other paper, just on candidates and so forth, and then we'll have one more Front Porch Forum opportunity. So, why don't you take a look at what Diane crafted, and then, John, if you can send that information out, we can maybe reconstitute that.
What, what other, well, I wonder if they would do it, I'm just, I was just wondering if we should, as one more advocacy piece, ask the other legislators to send out something encouraging people to vote for the budget, but I don't know if they'd be willing to do that or not, I can ask them.
Okay.
What is the word limit for Front Porch, Front Porch Forum?
It's like, no.
I don't know if there's a word limit as much as, it's just the-
There is a word limit, isn't there?
Protocol as well, or is?
I'm pretty sure there is.
I think there's some kind of a limit, because often they have links to something that's more-
But, but I've seen it's pretty long ones, too.
Patrick's was pretty long.
Yeah, Patrick's was long.
I'd, it's never been limited.
Yeah, I don't think, it's just a matter of what you want to foist on people, and whether they're gonna pay attention to it, I think it's-
Well, feel free to edit liberally.
Well, I think, and I think we'd be better off with sort of bullet points on that platform.
I just sent Diane's, I just sent that out.
Did you put the correct figure in? Sorry.
Yes.
Well, let's see if we-
Yeah, I, I, in mine, I did, I, you know, in that, I just forwarded the exchange, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anything else on budget communication? So, we'll, we'll organize attendance at the polls, and at, at minimum, we'll target the three times a day where we know it's more activity.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right. Did you want to talk about transportation?
Um, I, I, oh, yes, I didn't, it's not on my other thing, so, not on my, not on the yellow sheet, but included in my pack, that was the transportation, so, some of you, I kept some of you posted around transportation, and we have had a, we've had a difficult time with transportation with, with drivers, so we've had some driver shortage, some of it's been attributed to illness, and just not being able to fill all, all, all of our open positions for drivers, so, as a result of that, any added sickness puts us into a crisis where we can't cover routes, and we, from the very beginning of the year, we're struggling to meet some of our, our times. So, my hope was, is that when we strengthen our capacity with, with bringing on our drivers or bringing back our drivers, it would, it would resolve itself. It did not, and as a result, we're in a situation where we're dropping off three buses at each of the elementary schools 15 minutes earlier. These are buses that are primarily been late to the high-middle route, and so we've been dropping them off 15 minutes early, we've had supervision in the cafeterias, we've also been able to provide them breakfast a little earlier, and we're seeing some improvement right now. Again, we're a few days into it, we've, we're still working out some of the bugs, but generally, kids are getting here, all kids are getting here on time, we've had some anxiety around kids that, you know, they're walking in late, and it's, it's sporadic, so, we hope for a resolve. The other part is that we do have, we put out an RFP for a closer look at transportation, and so we have an individual who is doing that work, kind of draw a blank on her last name, Pauline-
Gervais.
Gervais, thank you, John, and she actually has spent a good portion of this week looking at what we do, how we do it, and she comes to us as a community member, but she was in her, in her previous, she retired from the Denver Public School System, she was head of transportation for Denver Public Schools, so, she's providing some really good insight, and I'm looking forward to meeting with her, she has some good ideas that we'll, we'll take a look at, so, anyway, I, I just wanted to make people aware that we're continuing to work on that. And drivers, if you know people that are interested in a 25-hour-a-week position and driving great kids and on good equipment, you know, it's a, it's a great job, so.
It requires special license?
There is, because it's air brake, is a CDL with, with bus driver endorsement that's required, and we help significantly folks get through that. The other part of that is that we did hire Kelly Services to, to work with us, to give us guaranteed drivers, so we've paid some money to work with Kelly Services to help us to get drivers, so they're a, you know, a third party that goes out and will recruit and bring people in, so, we need to, we need to make sure that we resolve.
Are they temporary, then, is it?
No, they, they would be, they'd be full-time, permanent people.
Will they do the recruiting for you, basically?
Correct, and they do all of the, you know, the backend work, where they guarantee if that's, if they don't do it, then they don't get paid. So, we're, we're, we're working through the, the issues, I don't want to get, I mean, this is, this is, right now, we know it's a problem across all of Vermont, we get a lot of, lot of our, whether their, their own, their own services or contracted services don't, they're short bus drivers right now, so, anyway, thanks for reminding me on that.
I know, I see some buses come through really late.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're hoping that that's been resolved, either that, or they're out on joy drives after, I don't know, shouldn't be.
I thought you just implemented that new calendar earlier.
Oh.
All right, we'll move to Agenda Item 13, Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring on 2.5, Financial Planning and Budgeting.
Mm-hmm, and we're on time, we're, we're close to our on time here, so. So, John, you ready to walk us through? Any questions? I mean, I guess we'll start there, questions from the board first.
Was there a committee on it?
Yes. Julie and I met with John on this.
Yeah, I appreciate-
I'm sorry, I just wondered if this is one that the committee is reporting out on, or are you walking through?
Well, do you want to recap, John, kind of what we went through?
Right, on a, on a overall basis, when you, when you're in a position like mine, you tend to over-document things, and, and we talked about copies of, for instance, nine pages of the budget book as, as, as evidence, but that have to be there, and we came up with, why not just list the topics in the table of contents, so that there's documentation of what was discussed? Or references to board minutes, just refer them, don't dig up the minutes, and then there's two or three mixed pages, that kind of thing, so I appreciated that, that, because the exhibits went from 25 pages down to seven, so that, that's more manageable for everybody, and I think people can, can look at it more closely. We also looked at a two, financial planning and budgeting for another district, and looked at their, it's kind of a-
Yeah, that was interesting.
Very small, it's a different district, but we, we looked at that, and I need to get with David and, and go through the details on that, just to get another look on superintendent's interpretation, this keeps your, we've looked at this fresh, and I think we've done this six or seven, have we done it six years? I mean, we've done it quite a long time, so, to get a fresh perspective on 2.5 is helpful, same with the superintendent's interpretation. On Detail Policy 1, the, the changes are in this little green, I hope you can read it, I tried to find a color that didn't, that could show up.
The changes are in green, so what's the yellow?
The yellow were the changes we made from the prior report.
Oh, okay.
And the changes, the changes in green are the new ones from-
Okay.
-our meeting.
Mm-hmm, that was smart.
The first thing on here was compliance about the external audit, and before this, we had a management letter, and just the management letter was thrown in here, I, I split it up into issues that were in compliance-
I split it up into issues that were in compliance. There was two issues that we're, we're in compliance with, and two that we're not. So, and the school lunch deficit. We've, we were supposed to have done financial reports to the board, and through no fault by anyone but me, they're, they're not here. I just want to make that on the record, that our accountant, Sue, and Rhonda have been doing them. I haven't had a chance to really edit them and look at them, but that'll start up. And the key point is, our deficit was reduced, but we still are non-compliant till we essentially get rid of that. Secondly, is student activity accounts, and that goes hand-in-hand with fundraising. And we showed the progress, the activity that's been going on, so, and, and the problem. We've had two days, and we have one more day with our auditor. He, he's going through every phase of it, and we'll have a report with, with the, with the big audit next month. But it was, I think it's money well-spent, and, and we'll get some feedback from him tomorrow. We just kind of let him work the last few days, so I don't have any feedback to tell you yet. But that's something that's new that's in here. So, it's not non-compliant. Further efforts are necessary in the student activity account area and fundraising areas to become more fully in compliance in addition to nutritional services.
What about, you know, the new committee that's looking at fundraising? I mean, that's moving in the right direction.
Oh, it sure is. And in here, we talked about, the fundraising review program has been put together and started, starting to be in use. It's, it's just interesting, the CDC, Community, no.
Career Development.
Career Development Center. I've met with Nancy and Ed Hockenberry to clarify things, and we've been getting some good feedback. For instance, not in our policy anywhere was, when does a student get credit for community service? If an organization just comes and says, hey, I want you to canvass for X charity, and no, there's no credit for community service. And that, that's something we're going to add to the plan, so there's been a lot of good dialogue, and still stones to be unturned, overturned.
So, on this one, you're reporting non-compliance with Detail Policy 1?
Yes.
For the specific issues of the student activity and lunch deficit, or nutritional services?
Right.
Do you want to cover Detail Policy 2, John?
Sure. Detail Policy 2, most of this is, the yellow stayed from before, the revenue projections were in, in order. I think that the, the green part down here, as far as preparation and submission, this is something that we've, I believe we've been in compliance, but I don't know that the board has really looked at this, and we need to, in, in our budget, be, be sure that we cover these things. The city manager and superintendent of schools shall prepare the budgets, and then it should contain the following things. And an estimate of the financial condition of the city and school district as of the end of the fiscal year, and itemized statements of appropriations recommended for current expenses, and that kind of thing. So, these, we need to pay attention to every, every year. I do think we've been in compliance, although we got some feedback during the budget process, hey, get some projections out here, and it turned out that was a charter requirement, so, good thing there, so. And then, so, that was good learning. I, I think we complied, I'm saying we complied. And then, the capital stayed the same, the capital expenditures from where we reported in December. Cash flow is .3, and the suggestion was to have, if you look at page 10, just to kind of keep it simple, we do show a cash flow statement at the top of the page, that the other district also, you know, it's a cash flow you have to use for a bank, so that's there as a record. But just to keep simple what we actually did, and the little blue-green shows the number of borrowings we had, and what time period, and how it was repaid. So, that was, that was as a result of our, our discussion. And then, four didn't change, except for where we had before. Number five is the annual report, city and school budgets. That's where the, the evidence in Exhibit 3 is a lot smaller. It just shows its contents, if someone needs to know what we covered here. The budget's there, because it's Exhibit 3. Enrollment trends, facility repairs, special education, that kind of thing, so. And I'm sorry, I'm really jumping fast.
We're in Exhibit 3.
On the bottom of page seven.
Yeah.
That's where Exhibit 3 is referenced. Exhibit 3 is in the exhibits of page three.
Oh, so, okay, gotcha.
Yeah. And that's where we saved a lot of, a lot of paper. This is a big one, this number two. And at the top of page eight says, I report policy compliance.
I was looking for that.
It's up there. Maybe it could be spaced on the, on the page seven. So, that's what the idea was there.
And it looks like some pretty modest changes on Detail Policy 3?
That's right. The, the main change there was detail of the school board budget. We included eight or nine pages of just the ledger, wasn't really necessary.
And the Point 2 on the Schools Out Nutritional Services again?
That's right. Schools Out is listed here as far as the accounts receivable. And, and I did reference in, in the answer on page 10, once again, in the blue-green portion, as we mentioned, as we mentioned, additional staff is necessary at the central level to effectively monitor the situation. A part-time or contractual physician to assist with this. Nutritional services in Schools Out will be included pending the passage of the '16 budget. However, if it's not approved, the business office will vigorously take on these collections. So, we're not, we're not saying it's not going to happen, it's just, we'd like to have more staff if, if we don't.
That one read a little awkwardly. It's that a part-time or contractual physician to assist with this is just hanging in there. I'm, I'm not sure, is needed to assist with this, or?
Is needed, yeah.
Part-time or contractual position is needed. Probably is needed.
I think it's okay, right? It just needs a comma after Schools Out. No, it does, that's a point. No, it's okay.
Schools Out being.
Assist with this will be included.
How are time?
It is.
This effort, this, this work, and then, period, nutrition, and I can restructure it, just in two sentences.
Yeah.
So, once again, that's, that's non-compliant.
So, questions or comments on 2.5?
Just a related question on, on Policy Number 1 and the very last bit that we read. I assume that we're going to be voting on whether the compliance plan is acceptable, and I just want to confirm that, starting with 2.1, really, the compliance plan is in the evidence as well, where you're talking about the various, for instance, on the student activity accounts?
Yes.
Those are the items that are going to be done to comply? Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And, and the same goes with the last bit, that under risk for financial jeopardy, you're kind of also spelling out what the compliance plan is?
Oh, it's spelled out there instead of in the, on the action. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
It is spelled out, yeah.
Right. I just wanted to confirm that that was the compliance.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
So, one of the things we talked about doing is reading the detailed policies and then the overall policy a little more explicitly. Do we want to try that with this one?
Like right now?
Like right now? No time like the present. Not, I'm not saying the whole thing, I'm saying the, the detailed policy.
Well, I see.
Right, so.
Just a question, I mean, but I thought you were just talking about, you looked at something else that might adjust what the superintendent's interpretation might be? I mean, did you say, I mean?
Well, it's just to kind of provide a frame of reference to, and, and see if our thinking's fresh in that area. You know, that's, that's, that's what I.
And did, I mean, and did you go through that exercise to see if?
No.
Well, I'm wondering if this is the right one, or right time to do it, on this one, particularly if we have some other information that might cause us to want to revisit the, or David, revisit the interpretation. I'm not trying to get out of doing that, but is this the right, because, because I thought that we would really spend more time and read, and then look at the interpretation, and make sure we agree with the interpretation, and not necessarily read the evidence, but.
I wasn't proposing reading the evidence.
No, no, I understand.
But if we're going through the monitoring report, are we suggesting we not, I guess, give me a specific suggestion. You'd rather not go through of reading and do our normal, is it, is the interpretation reasonable?
Yeah, I think, because, because I really think this one, from what I just heard, there should be some revisiting of, of the interpretation before we really, so, go deeper into this one.
I do think, though, that that was a general comment, and, I, I mean, that's how I saw it, and it wasn't, there wasn't anything specific that we saw that we didn't have in here.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it was in relation to reading somebody else's report, too.
Yeah, I didn't want that point to be lost, but I didn't want to make it.
Right.
Because more than it is.
I, I guess, Elizabeth, I mean, at least I had a vision there, is that we would definitely spend more time, and it wouldn't be one where a committee.
It's where there's a work session.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a committee have just looked at it. I would have looked at it a lot closer, and with closer.
And, and I'm, yeah, then that's fair. And what I'm suggesting is, we actually just read, rather than, say, Detail Policy 1, just read through what is being assessed.
Yeah, no, that, that's absolutely fine. It's just that I wouldn't count that as one of the, get deep into one of these.
I understand, yeah.
I also think you were going to identify them ahead of time on the agenda, so anybody that might have a particular interest in hearing this, go through the, you all go through the policy.
You can be in the audience and help, you know, there's no reason not to join for that.
Yeah, and we're going to pick kind of one or two a year to do that with. Okay. And I'm sorry, Martin, I, I didn't mean the full read-through on this.
Okay, all right.
All right. So, on Policy Monitoring Report on 2.5, Detail Policy 1. Further without limiting the scope of the foregoing by this enumeration, there will be no financial plans that risk incurring those situations or conditions described as unacceptable in the board policy, financial conditions, and activities. Is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Is the data adequate?
Yes.
And we are not in compliance? Is the compliance plan acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Detail Policy 2. There will be no financial plans that omit credible projection of revenues and expenses, separation of capital and operational items, cash flow, disclosure of planning assumptions, and predicted financial impact. Is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the data adequate?
Yes.
Are we in compliance?
Yes.
There will be no financial plans that provide less for board prerogatives during the year than is set forth in the governance investment policy. Is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Is the data adequate?
Yes.
I believe we are out of compliance on this?
Right.
And is the compliance plan acceptable?
Wait, is that one more?
I think we're out of compliance on that one.
On number three? No, we're in compliance enough.
Oh, we are?
Three?
Yep.
You sure?
That's what it says, and I thought we were.
Yeah, we are.
Page eight. It's the overall one, though.
Oh, the overall, okay. So, we're in compliance on Detail Policy 3?
Yes.
And on the overall policy, the superintendent shall not cause or allow financial planning for any fiscal year or the remaining part of any fiscal year to deviate materially from the board's ends priorities, risk financial jeopardy, or fail to be derived from a multi-year plan. Is the interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
Is the data adequate?
Yes.
We are not in compliance, and is the compliance plan acceptable?
Yes.
All right. Do I need to take a motion on this, or was that the?
I think just by acting on your, have we done it? We usually, we usually do all those in favor, or, we usually do an action on this, don't we? I think that's kind of consistent.
I think, I think we're doing it this way, yeah.
Everybody's in agreement.
I'm going to see if we have a fresh one, yeah.
I guess if, if you had discrepancy in the interpret, you know how you were doing that, it would be different. We haven't had that.
Six, six years later, we're going to get it right eventually.
A work in progress.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14, Setting the Agenda for the March 4th Meeting.
One thing we don't have in here is, we have election of chairperson and clerk, but we don't really have any recap of, maybe I'll put that in Superintendent's Report. So, I can put that in Superintendent's Report, so we don't.
Well, it makes sense to have the front someplace we need.
Yeah, so what you want to do, put an item in there, election result, after 3?
Yeah.
Are you expecting the students to not be here?
No, they're, they're expected here.
It's under Item 7.
Oh, I see.
Are we doing an end celebration?
No.
I see it, I see.
No. There's not, we're not doing 7, so we took that off.
Well, we'll do the student representative, but not the end celebration.
Hi, Donna Kimball, are you here?
Yes.
David, I think we'll be at Orchard, that we are doing this.
Oh, is that, did we, so they're, they're on.
Yes, it's, we'll be doing another one at Tunnel for a while.
But they're, so they're online for that one, right?
They are.
Yeah, all right. So, I, thanks to her for correcting that.
And I, I don't know if you want a separate item, but, yeah, we'll do the swearing in right before the organization.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, she does that outside the meeting, so.
She does. She does it before the meeting starts, yeah.
Right, as we start. We call it meeting order.
So, would you need to have it done before the executive session, then?
No, we usually just break and do it right before the public, public session.
I don't know that Patrick can be in on the executive session first.
We, we have actually done the swearing in at, just before 6 o'clock in the past.
You've even done it other days, because in my case.
So, we can see if Donna can do it at 6, and then can enter into executive session, so.
Are you going to let them know that?
Uh, Pat, and Donna.
And you can take, elevator project needs to stay on?
Well, that's kind of ongoing, but the two action items will be later, so we don't necessarily have to have it next time. There's two action items.
Yeah, and I think we probably take it off, which is good.
The bid's action there?
Instead of, there, we usually do it here.
I got to look at this some more, you know, we may have some other things we're missing, but.
Is there, is there anything else from a board perspective that should be on, or should be deleted from the March 4th agenda?
How about 28, 21, and 27? I don't think they should be deleted, but that's a lot.
That is a lot.
Especially with 21, and that's a big report, so.
2, 210, you mean?
Well, 2.10.
I'd recommend keeping 28, and pushing 27 to the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Because they're two.
And I don't know if continued is the right word for 2.10, because I think that implied that we were actually going to do that tonight, and we noted, so it's not really continued.
For either, we can take that off.
And within that, when David was doing the future agenda items, they're. And, and within that, when David was doing the future agenda items, there won't be any part of the school foundation, I don't think.
Yeah, that was my.
2-210, I don't know why, see where he put monitoring reports to go with them? There will be a little bit on surveys, but most of the stuff is the other stuff that's, you know, obviously the quality standards, all those pieces.
I think I just got a little happy with.
I won't be doing anything with evidence.
With policies.
Okay.
So, thanks, Stuart.
Just reported on 2-5 today, does that make trends in substitute use go away?
No.
No, because we're going to, I have that on the next.
So it needs to get.
Oh, that, that's a good one, we, we need to put that, oh, that will be.
Pushing something else to 2-5, then.
I'm going to suggest that goes under the superintendent's report, and we'll put update, you know, substit, because we have ASOP, right?
Yeah.
And.
What's mine?
Yeah, that's something.
It's a program to help us track substitute, and Julie actually had the opportunity to sit on that, so I'll put it on my superintendent's report, and Julie can also provide the board with some.
Right.
Information at that time.
All right.
I have a question with the administration of the board, are you doing, planning to do all of those?
Definitely nutrition services.
Actually, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
Schools out, too. Can we push schools out for another one?
Yeah. And that was when we pushed, then we got, again, but couldn't that just be a report? Just a ten to read in the future?
Maybe it could be on the superintendent's.
Well, let us, we got to, we got to look at this, because you got to time adjust some of these, so, you know.
We don't want to scare Patrick off at the first meeting.
Patrick, so, yeah.
The schools out, there's always, you know, he's so proactive that there's always some kind of discussion about stuff he wants to do, so.
Okay.
That's, needs some time.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, any future agenda items to be added or deleted? We'll take that 2.10 off.
Every time we delete one, we'll take, we'll send an email to you, Diane, okay? In the future.
That would be right.
Well, I mean, a great number of these things will be in 2.10.
Yeah.
And so that will.
So hopefully they'll come off next, next time. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 16, consider the minutes of the February 4th meeting. Any changes or comments on those?
Good to know.
If seeing none, those are approved by consensus, and we have consent agenda items?
Yeah, so let me just touch on those. So we have two announced retirements, Jane Potash and Bobby, or Bobby Pennington. Both are full-time teachers, and they've been at Rick Marcock for a good number of years, so, again, you know, we're seeing, seeing some of these things occur. Again, some of these decisions are hard for, for some of our teachers, and so just recognizing their good service to the district, and on your behalf, we'll send a, you know, some correspondence to them, thanking them for their service and letting them know that we wish them the best.
I was trying to say, I mean, this is a unique time for two retirements, that both of my kids had Mrs. Potash, and Tess, my daughter, had Mrs. Pennington, and actually Griffin, because they were team teaching, also had Mrs. Pennington, so, we're going to miss them, so.
I actually have a letter from Bobby that she asked me to read to you, because she wished she could be here tonight, so I will do that. It says, "To the South Burlington School Board, I was hoping to be present with you tonight to deliver these words in person, but I have a prior commitment. I wanted to say how much I have loved teaching at Rick Marcock Central School. I've been blessed with an amazing fifth grade team of teachers. Every year has been exciting, challenging, and fulfilling. Retirement is right for me this year, but leaving is bittersweet. Thanks for being such a hardworking, dedicated board. I have never forgotten all of the hours you poured into your own children's school years and the support you gave us as elementary school teachers. Thank you for entrusting me with such an important job. Gratefully, Bobby Pennington." And I would just add to what Martin said, and I know you guys all have had Bobby, too, and, you know, all of our teachers are awesome, but Bobby stands out to me and my children, especially as a star, and has made such an impact on their lives and continues to be in their lives, which I find really unbelievable, but.
I think Bobby is the one teacher that all three of my sons have in the district. She's just amazing, and, and Will had Jane Potash, too, so they, they, these teachers touched our lives, too.
We'll make sure to share that and let her know that, I can deliver that message to her.
Yeah, please pass on our thanks and our gratitude to both these excellent teachers.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so this does not need an action, correct?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Any questions on AP Order 29? And it looks like we do need action on AP Order, check to Nagley and Chase Construction?
Correct.
In the amount of $94,389. Give us a quick recap of.
Sure, I, I put a, I put the punch list in just to show you, our electrical engineers, our mechanical engineers, and our architects are on it, and, and so the, the elevator was put in service January 7th, I think is the date on the, the permit, and it's been given the test of cold weather, I have to tell you, so. These, the punch list is, is about $20,000 we've withheld, and that won't be released till, those, those are all cut off, so.
And this is all within budget?
Yes, there's, we, well, it's within a few thousand dollars of budget. We, we had $400,000, and this is 403, and part of it is the insulation. I showed Julie and Diane, I know the board spent some considerable time up in that room last year freezing, and you won't freeze now, you may be too hot. So the, the lack of insulation was evident, and it didn't make sense to tear it, tear it out and then not put it back in, so that, that caused some change orders.
So it wasn't really related to the elevator, it was related more to a discrepancy that was found on building.
That's right, so change orders was in 8%, and, and almost all of that was insulation in the front, front work there.
It's an unpopular motion, but if it's put after, everybody agrees, I'll let somebody else move.
Do I have a motion to approve AP Order to Nagley and Chase Construction as recommended?
So moved.
Julie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes?
Thank you.
And do I have a motion to barring any other comments, David? A motion to adjourn? That's popular.
That's my line, right?
Only unpopular.
Diane made that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Diane, thank you for your service.
And we are adjourned.